Called to order the second meeting of the Mayor and City Council. Please stand for the invocation by Reverend Warren Litchfield and then the pledge of allegiance by the Mayor.
Madam President, if you would join me in a moment of silent prayer for the slain Virginia Tech Officer who was laid to rest today. Almighty God, we gather this evening out and collect the business of this city. We offer our prayer for our Mayor, for the President, for the members of the City Council, and all in authority, grant to them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duties in behalf of all thy people. We especially commend your gracious care and keeping all the men and women of our armed forces at home and abroad, our law enforcement and fire and rescue community, and defend them day by day with your heavenly grace, strengthen them in their trials and temptations, give them courage to face the peril which set them, and grant unto each a sense of your abiding presence wherever they may be. Remember those upon a bed of affliction; comfort those that mourn; and may the peace of this holiday season abide in your hearts always. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Did you call the roll, Ms. Ralph?
Mr. Les?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Smalls?
Here.
Mr. Ricks?
Here.
President Carrery?
Here.
Mayor Moe?
Agenda item number five is approval of the minutes of the 73rd meeting of November 28th and the first meeting of November 28, 2011. It's a pleasure of the Council.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the 73rd meeting of November 28th and the first meeting of November 28th.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
You call the roll, Ms. Ralph.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Abstain.
President Carrery?
Yes.
We're gonna move a little bit out of order right now, and I believe Mayor Moe and our Fire Marshal, Dave Cope, have some presentations to make.
In October, we had the fire prevention shows. We covered four schools: Laurel Elementary, First Baptist, St. Mary's of the Mill, and Scotstown. And what we did, we gave first, second, and third prizes, awards, to the second and third grade. Basically, it was everybody that participated in the show. We do a week-long program with this, and what we're doing tonight is presenting awards. You notice they're all posted on the wall out there, all the poster contests. The Mayor has advised that you can take your poster home tonight if you'd like to remove your poster. Well, I'll help you. I'll be here to do that. We're gonna call your name up, and then we'd like you to come up here, and we'll give you an award, and then take a picture with the Mayor. So in no particular order, we're gonna start with Laurel Elementary. Third place, Michelle Calio. I know she's here. She checked in. Michelle? Richard Guana. Please come up. And the first-place winner, Yalta Cantares. For the third grade, Elizabeth Romero. Third place, come on up. Oh, I don't have her checked in here. Second place, Anthony Diaz. And first place, Rodney Britt. First Baptist School, Ryan McBride, third place, third grade. Second place, Ife Amato. And first place, Lauren Patrick. And Lauren's not here right now. We're gonna move to the second grade. Third place, Geratu Corrego. Second place, Sidney Bowles. And first place, Desmond Gamble. First place. Okay, St. Mary's of the Mills, third grade. Third place, Catherine Paris. Second place, Samaya Tobiga. First place, Deanna K. Bars. Second grade, William Kendrick, third place. Second place, Adita. First place, second grade, Edmund Quarle. Scotstown Hills Elementary's, I only have one that's checked in. Is anybody else here from Scotstown Elementary other than Ms. Goodine? Okay. Ava Griffin, third place. Jennifer Brudoma and Kimberly Gadu. They were the first, second, and third place for Scotstown Elementary. For second grade, Rihanna Goodine. I know she's here. Good job. Second place was Joshua Flanagan. And first place was Vanas Romero Agrita. Uh, hold. We're gonna fix that. Somebody's came off their, the label came off. There we go. It would be this young lady. Some other people came in that I didn't call their names. Are they here? Did I, did somebody else show up that I didn't call their name? Okay? Okay, Mayor, do you wanna do a group picture with all of them out in the hallway and then continue? We can do all the poster winners out in the hallway in front of the poster contest, and then we'll basically be done. We'd just like to have the kids out there, please just stand against the wall, and we'll take a picture. I know somebody came, some people came in late, so if you do not have your award, please come up here and see me. I will call your name out. If not, Bob will. These pictures here? Uh, this is Deputy City Administrator. He'll, he'll get your phone number, or we'll get your phone number, and we'll get our IT guy to do it. You want me to do it? Here, what school are you from?
St. Mary's.
You got a card? I don't have a card. Well, maybe I do have a card. Never mind, I don't need them anymore. Just call me.
Just tell you. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
And then I'll arrange it.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Let's get started with the report of the Mayor and City Council. And first up tonight, why don't we have Councilman Les?
Thank you, Madam President. Saturday, December 3rd, I gave testimony to Prince George's County Delegation at Prince George Community College on the bag bill. It has substantial sponsorship. We'll see if it gets out of the legislature this year. It is not a tax. It is a fee, and I suggested the fee go to clean up on the Patuxent watershed. Tuesday, December 6th, I attended the Historic District Commission meeting. I wanna thank the administration for bringing the State Highway Association representatives to meet with us on Wednesday, December 7th. I wanna thank the Mayor for a very pleasant party on December 8th. His receptions, had a chance to talk to a lot of our citizens, and I appreciate that. Friday, December 9th, I had the pleasure of attending Mary Lehman Senior Citizens Breakfast over in the new senior citizens center over next to the hospital. It was well-attended, and saw many people from Laurel, West Laurel, all over the county. Friday, December 9th, I also attended the employee holiday party. This is the first one in several years I was able to make, and it was good to see all of the city staff celebrating their holiday party together. Saturday, December 10th, I thanked the Laurel Volunteer Rescue Squad for inviting us to the dedication of the new heavy crash unit. It is a beautiful truck, and it's well-equipped, and I'm sure that it will serve the citizens of Laurel and Prince George's County and surrounding counties well. And finally, December 10th, Laurel Historical Society had their Christmas house tour. I wanna thank the citizens that opened their houses to the, to the attendees, and I'm sure that the Historical Society made a substantial amount of money because they had a really good turnout. I wanna also thank Deputy City Administrator for calling my house and coordinating ties today, and that reminds me that as we wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season, we need to remind ourselves that we still have many, many citizens of this great nation serving overseas, men and women, and we need to keep them in our thoughts. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Les, Councilmember Nicholas?
I just wanna wish everyone a happy holiday and a safe holiday. I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ricks?
I'd like to do the same. I'd like everybody to be vigilant during this holiday season with all the Christmas trees and everything in the houses, like everybody to be as safe as possible, and make sure that you check the water in your trees at all times to make sure that they stay as fresh as possible, and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilmember Smalls?
Thank you, Madam President. On Tuesday, December 6th, I had the opportunity to attend the Planning Commission meeting where, among other topics, we discussed the installation of a wall at the BG&E, I'll just call it substation for lack of a better word, at the corner of Fourth Street and, what's that other? Greenview, Greenway, Green Hill. Green Hill, thank you. I'm very pleased that BG&E is taking the steps to make sure that the wall is pretty much vandal proof, that is. It will be coated with a covering that will not allow tagging of that area, as well as there'll be some appropriate shrubbery placed there. On Saturday, December 10th, I had the opportunity to attend the Sustainable Maryland Certified Workshop in College Park. During that workshop, we discussed strategies for the creation of green teams in our communities and ways to maintain and establish a sustainable green infrastructure. Additionally, I had an opportunity to attend a variety of holiday events that were hosted by various city departments and the Mayor. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I won't repeat all the events that we've attended together. I will expound upon the Sustainable Maryland that we attended. Councilmember Smalls, myself, Council staff Carl Brendel, and also from our business, our Board of Trade, Gail Reinhardt, also attended. It was a pretty amazing meeting, not only the green infrastructure, but gathering from all the cities and community development throughout Prince George's and Montgomery Counties, and I believe Carroll County was represented too. It was very interesting how to set up the green committees and how they'll umbrella and create a subsystem under our already-existing green committees. So it'll be another chance for our citizens to work together with staff and this council to expand that and be available for some state funding, which would be wonderful. I too would like to wish everyone a wonderful holiday. This'll be our last meeting, as the December 26th meeting will be canceled, so that everyone can enjoy their holidays, and I wish everyone, and I will see you in the new year. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. A couple things, condolences to the family and friends of Carl Owens, who was a life member at the Laurel Fire Department, and actually was the longest-serving member of the department. I think it was 69 years at the date of his passing. Also, to the friends and family of Cliff and Joni Nolan on the passing of Arnold Nolan Jr., who is Cliff's father. Speedy recovery, and best wishes to Mabel Litchfield, who's a little bit under the weather. Chaplin, give her our best, as well as our city administrator, who's under the weather. Let me take this opportunity to thank Fire Marshal Cope and all the kids who took part in the poster contest. I think that says a lot for the city and the city staff of getting out to the schools and talking about fire safety and prevention. Let me also take this opportunity to congratulate Ms. Luanne Crook, who has received the certification of municipal clerk designee, so congratulations to Luanne. The swearing-in of the Mayor and Council was at our last meeting. Again, I wanna acknowledge and thank Judge Nichols for that as well. Had the opportunity to attend the reopening ceremony at the Reality House, which is located on Main Street, and as well as on December 3rd, the holiday parade and armory lighting. Let me give my thanks to all the city staff who worked and supported, and I think probably we had three or 400 individuals there participating, so it was well-attended. I was very honored to, and privileged to turn on the lights at the 13th Annual Tree of Lights Ceremony at the Laurel Regional Hospital, where they use that as a fundraiser every year and made quite a bit of money off that this year. So, the, as you heard from others here, the Laurel Volunteer Rescue Squad, new rescue squad, was dedicated to Finley de Carmel. Finley is a longtime member of the Laurel Volunteer Rescue Squad, very dedicated to the department as well as to this city, and we thought we wanna wish him the very best and thank him for all of his service. The, let me remind all residents that the snow emergency routes, you need to make sure you know and understand the requirements. If you live on a snow emergency route, if you do get snow and have to go declare a snow emergency, you cannot park on certain sides of the streets on those designated roads. So we encourage you to make sure you, you know where you're parking, because if not, we may end up having to tow. Madam President, I'd like to make just a couple appointments. We did send a memo over to Ms. Toni Drake to the City of Laurel Ethics Commission, as Drake lives in the Patuxent-Glen area, and Calvin Parks, who's a retired lieutenant with Fairfax County Fire and Rescue, to the City of Laurel Emergency Services Commission, and he lives in the Wellington subdivision. I'd ask for your concurrence and your approval of those, and with that said, let me wish everyone a happy holiday and a safe new year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. What's the pleasure of the Council on these appointments?
Madam President?
Yes.
That's a move.
Second?
Second.
Called the roll.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Smalls?
Vote yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Carrery?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to open the general public hearing at 7:26. I have no one signed up to speak. However, I believe there's a Mr. Breckford that's here tonight that would like to do a presentation. And I think I just called you by your company name.
Yes, you did.
Would you state your name and, from the Breckford Company?
I certainly will. My name is Jerry Friscorn. I am a representative from the Breckford Corporation. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's my pleasure this evening to present a award of appreciation to the Laurel Police Department. I am the program manager for your speed camera program, and it probably could not be more appropriate on this evening when you saw the many children where they're here. The purpose of this program, obviously, is to protect the children in the school zones. And I'll read the plaque and present it to Chief McLaughlin. "The Breckford Corporation Automated Traffic Enforcement Group presents to the City of Laurel Police Department this award of appreciation commemorating the program's one-year anniversary, November 22nd, 2010 to November 22nd, 2011." Chief, on behalf of Breckford, thank you.
Chief?
If I may, real quickly. A year ago in November, we started this program as a warning phase with two cameras, or actually, we started with one in the area of Laurel High School. At that time, we had about 2,400 violations a day in excess of 12 miles an hour over the posted speed limit. That's excessive. That's a real problem. As part of the pre-deployment study, we did, we found those numbers to be accurate. The 22nd of November, we started the warning period, which went for a period of 30 days as mandated by the legislation. During that 30-day period, we decided we were gonna do the westbound side also, which also indicated a high volume of violators. 90 days after the initiation of the actual citation period, which was in December, December 22nd, or December 23rd, 90 days later, we did a post-deployment study on both sides of the road. The results of that showed an 83% reduction in the number of speed violations that we were having. Again, that doesn't mean that we don't have speed violations in the city, however, it is citywide, noticed citywide. However, the end result is, is a reduction of speed violations, particularly in over 12, 12 and over the posted speed limit, which is significant, and it is lifesaving. We've had two children that have been struck in the area of Laurel High School. The injuries have been minor in comparison to what they would have been had the speed still been what they were. So this is a very successful program. I'd like to thank Breckford for the opportunity to utilize their, their program. As you know, right now, we currently have six cameras, which are all within the school zones, and it has caused, it has caused the reduction in speed. So thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for allowing Breckford to, to provide the service to us, and let's hope it continues.
Thank you. Great results. I have no one else signed up to speak at the general public hearing. I will close it at 7:30. Next on the agenda is item number eight, a consideration of bid recommendations for the municipal center roof repairs. Mr. Lotzky?
Good evening. Uh, you should have before you a memory dated December 5th, 2011. This was also discussed at the most recent work session. You may recall, we went out to, to bid for repairs on the roofs here at the municipal center. Prior to that, we did bring in a consultant that advised us on what we could afford to do, what we couldn't afford to do, and what needed to be done now and what could wait. We went out to bid in October, and you may recall, the bids came in fairly spread out, and we chose not to accept those bids and, and rebid the project. Uh, the project was rebid, and we opened bids on December 2nd, 2011, and we got four bids. They are Coal Roofing Company out of Baltimore, Maryland for $44,645. Techta America Magco Incorporated out of Jessup, Maryland for $46,500. East Coast Building Services out of Billy, Maryland for $49,903. And J&amp;K Contracting Incorporated out of Capitol Heights for $80,000. After review by staff and city solicitor Bob Manzi, we were hoping that the Mayor and City Council would approve the bid from Coal Roofing Company for $44,645.
Thank you, Mr. Lotzky. Council, as we noted, this was discussed at the work session. What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I move that we accept Coal Roofing Company as a bid of $44,645.
Thank you, Councilmember Rex. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Les. Could we call the roll? Mr. Rex?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Querry?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have a consideration of bid recommendations for playground proposals for the Cypress Street Field Park. Mr. Lotzky?
Yes, Madam President. Again, discussed at the most recent work session, the City of Laurel was, the, uh, received our award, our grant from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources under their community park and playground program for $150,000. We've replaced a number of programs over the past years by using this program that's been very kind to the city. Some, many of the playgrounds have been installed for a long time, have gotten a lot of good use out of them, but it is time to replace them. Cypress Street is next on the list. With, with that, we, we asked four companies to, or more than four companies, but four companies provided bids for a playground that would not exceed $150,000, would be ADA accessible, and meet all the current safety guidelines for ages two to five and five to 12 years of age, and also have the bonded rubber servicing to protect the kids if they do fall. And we also included a picnic pavilion in this, in this proposal. So we, we've got four proposals, actually, we've got five proposals, because Compan Incorporated out of Silver Spring came in with two options. One was $145,194.55, and their second option was $149,746.30. West Recreation, which represents game time, came in at $149,641.51. Sparks at Play, which represents landscape structures at Owings Mills, Maryland, came in at $150,000. And Play and Park Structures, which represents Play Corps out of Severna Park, came in at $150,000. So as discussed at the work session, we, we got drawings and sketches and, and bird's-eye views of all the play, play structures that these companies submitted. We had our Parks and Rec CAC committee take a look at it. We had staff take a look at it, and even our preschool teachers who operate the program over at the Robert J. De Pietro Community Center take a look at it. And we asked for everybody's first two choices, and we came up with a choice and a recommendation for Play and Park Structures at a Severna Park for $150,000. And we hope the Mayor and City Council will, were to bid for this playground for, to them.
Thank you, Mr. Lotzky. Council, as we know, this was discussed at the most recent work session. What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, move that we approve the contract proposal from Play and Park Structures for $150,000 for the replacement of the playground equipment at Cypress Street Field Park.
Thank you, Councilmember Les. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Nicholas. Call the roll. Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes, and, and Mr. Lotzky, as I mentioned in the work session, where possible and appropriate, if there could be some community involvement with this bill, I think it would go a long way. I vote yes.
Mr. Rex?
Yes.
President Querry?
Yes.
Next up, Agenda item number 10, consideration of bid recommendations for Discovery Park Rain Gardens.
Yes, Madam President. Again, discussed at the most recent work session, this proposal is for a rain garden and drainage structure at Discovery Park. This is a, a park that we most recently put in a very nice playground also, but historically, the playground and the, and the area around the playground, I should say, remains very wet during the spring season and even into the summer season, and again in the fall. We had some money in our CAP program from 2010 to 2015 for a rain garden structure in one of our parks. We asked a landscape consultant to come out and give us a plan that would address our water needs, but also, you know, have the rain garden installed, which would again be a nice feature to the park and also help drain some of that water in a, in a positive way. We had several companies come out and take a look at the plan and offer a proposal based on that plan, and they are as follows. T&amp;J Lawn Service out of Brookville, Maryland for $23,950. Brickman Group out of Laurel, Maryland, 20724, I should say, at, for $28,718. MT Gaither out of Brookville, Maryland for $32,870. And Chick Landscaping out of Burdensville, Maryland for $35,971. This plan includes some piping into a storm drain. I should say, the Public Works assisted us in shooting grades and will assist us with tapping into the back of that storm grade, storm drain per, uh, Prince George County permit. And so at this time, I'd like to recommend that the rain garden and drainage project be awarded to T&amp;J Lawn Service out of Brookville, Maryland for $23,950.
Thank you, Mr. Lotzky. What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I so move, move you award the contract to T&amp;J Lawn Services.
Thank you, Councilmember Rex. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Nicholas. Could we call the roll? Mr. Rex?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Querry?
Yes, and I think this project also begs for community involvement with our various environmental communities. If you could give us a heads up on this. Thank you so much for your presentations tonight. Now we move on to Agenda item number 11, which is the introduction and first public reading on ordinance number 1731 in ordinance to amend section 17141 of the City of Laurel Code to prohibit parking or standing on certain streets within the Crescent Development off Cherry Lane. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. And I opened the public hearing at 7:39. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing at 7:39. The second public hearing with possible action is scheduled for the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, January 9th at 7:00 p.m. Agenda item number 12 is the introduction and first public hearing on ordinance number 1732 in ordinance to amend chapter 17, article 7, section 139 of the Laurel City Code to provide no through-truck traffic on the streets in the Willow Oak Community. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:40. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at 7:41. The second public hearing with possible action is scheduled for the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, January 9th at 7:00 p.m.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I ask a question about this piece of legislation?
I would prefer that we do it in the next work session with the member of staff that presented this.
Agenda item 13 is the introduction and first public hearing on resolution number 23-11, a resolution to approve a revised investment policy statement for the City of Laurel retirement plans. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:41. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing at 7:42. The second public hearing with possible action is scheduled for the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, January 9th, 2012 at 7:00 p.m. As it appears there's no further business to come before the City Council, this meeting is adjourned.